Groundhog Day.
Groundhog Day, February 2nd.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday, February 2nd. Groundhog Day. Ponctani Phil saw his shadow, so we will have six more weeks of winter. It is 6:00 PM exactly. For those of you joining us in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and supporting documentation in little plastic bins on the wall by the door where you came in. Help yourself to that information. Should be a fairly short meeting this evening, and I will try to get through the State of the Town address as quickly as possible, but I have a little bit of a cold, so I'll apologize in advance. For those of you in council chambers this evening, we would appreciate if you'd turn off your cellphones and pagers while we get through this process. And we are being broadcast live on Channel 28. This session will be rebroadcast again Friday afternoon, or Friday at noon, and we're also streaming live over the Internet on our website at www.townofyountville.com. So this session will be recorded for all time. I think that's about it for the general announcements. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Chilton.
Here.
Councilmember Muller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Mayor Saucerman.
Here. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the five United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had closed session last meeting, and I believe there is no reportable action from that closed session. May I have the Item 7, Adoption of the Agenda? May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion carries. Item 8 is Public Comment. Anyone wishing to address anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Cindy Gates from Gates Estates here in Yountville. I just heard from one of my neighbors that you had talked about putting a bus stop in front of my office, and I was unaware that you were considering that, and I just wanted to speak to you a little bit about that. Through the spring and summer and most of the year, we have our door open, number one, and as it is, we get enough fumes from the stop sign right there. Number two, to have a bus stopping there where it's quite narrow, I just can't see where that's going to work, let alone having the fumes come in our office. Number two. Three, what I did was I went up and down Washington Street, studied where all our current bus stops are, and at the moment, we currently have four on our side of the street. To make an even stop between the next two, it seems like that would be Weber Street, where it's wider there, or either back just past Bouchon, where it's wider there with the gravel, so they have more, the bus has more room to even pull over. Where I am, there isn't any room to pull over. It's right, it would be apparently right in my only two parking spots that I have for my office. Even the side street, down the side, Humboldt's completely packed with waiters and chefs and whatnot that park around the corner there, but, so what we do is I have four of us that work in my office, and we carpool. We only bring two cars to work, and that's the only place that I have to park, is right in front of my office. And what we do is when one of my clients calls and they're on our way, we wait till they pull up in front, one of us gets out, moves our cars so that they can pull in, and then we drive around Yountville looking for a place to park. So I just wanted you to consider putting a bus stop hopefully somewhere else, as we have one right across the street from our office as well, so that's going to make it awfully narrow there for the, I think, for this function. Anyway, I wish I would have been notified. I apologize. I would have been here when you discussed it last time, so hopefully you'll consider changing that, and I've got lots of little documentation on it if it would help. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to leave your documents with the clerk, we can take a look at it, if that's what they're for. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Public comment on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we can move on to... I'm pretty sure she's aware of that. Cindy, you do realize that we're not allowed to discuss or take action on any item during public comment, and staff will definitely get back to you on your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Item 9, Consent, Approval of Tonight's Consent Calendar. Are there any changes or corrections to the consent calendar this evening?
Mayor, I would not be voting on Items C or D, as I have recused myself from discussions on those items.
Alrighty. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion carries, and let the record reflect, Councilmember Dutton will be abstaining from Items C and D. Okay, here's the fun part. Item 10, Presentations. I whipped together a little something for your information. A letter to the town of Yountville addressing our state of the town. And since I'm not feeling really good, and I might lose my voice any minute, I'm going to go through it rather quickly, or hopefully rather quickly. Please hold your thunderous applause and standing ovations until the very end. We would appreciate that. We want to get out of here before 10 o'clock. This is a letter to Yountville. Dear friends, neighbors, and colleagues, it has been almost a year since I last wrote to you, and so much has happened in the little town of Yountville. I'm entering my last year on the Yountville Town Council and the end of my term as your mayor. All that has transpired and all that has been accomplished this past year is due to the efforts of many, including this council and our outstanding management team and staff. More importantly, it is through your participation and support that makes all that we have accomplished Yountville's sweetest reward. Even though the economy throughout the country remains tenuous with only modest signs of recovery, Yountville continues to provide the high level of services to the community that we have come to expect and enjoy without compromise to our adopted budget. In addition to adopting a balanced budget last year, the council adopted several other goals and objectives, including: complete the master plan for the new community center and library; ensure continued fiscal responsibility; improve and enhance communications within Yountville; develop and implement organizational change; and begin the update process on the town's general plan as it relates to build-out. Well, without a doubt, the most significant accomplishment this past year was the completion of the town's largest public infrastructure project in its history, the new Yountville Community Center and Library. This outstanding new facility, which was 10 years in the making, opened to the public on November 24th, 2009. The project financed by an earmark of transient occupancy tax, or TOT, paid by our visitors, has come in on time and under budget. We are now working with the community, our Parks and Community Services Commission, and staff to fully implement and refine the council's adopted business plan that will provide a combination of recreation and leisure programming to meet the diverse needs of our community. The new center will also provide much-needed space for our local community groups and nonprofit organizations. The town's Parks and Recreation Department will be sending out a user interest survey to invite everyone to send in your ideas and comments about future programming for what we hope will truly be the center of our community. Of course, I don't need to remind you that prudent financial planning is and always will be the primary consideration as we carry out our goals and objectives. As such, the town council adopted a balanced budget last year, including a general fund budget of $5.1 million with projected revenues of $5.6 million before transfers to the Utility Enterprise Operations and Capital Projects Fund. Unlike the state, we have made and will continue to make adjustments to our budget and work plan that reflect available revenue and ensures that we continue to live within our means. This level of fiscal responsibility has allowed the town to increase our general fund undesignated reserves from $825,000 to $1,025,000. Additionally, with the sale of our surplus NBA Kern water, a drought water reserve bank fund of $2 million was established. This sale will also result in reduced annual operating costs for the water utility fund. Finally, we've secured a $1 million grant fund to class, to fund a Class 1 bike path from the north to the south end of town connecting to a valley-wide bicycle and pedestrian pathway system. The project is now out to bid with a scheduled construction start later this spring. As a result of this council's measured financial oversight, Yountville remains fiscally sound with prudent reserves. Another important goal that we tackled last year was to enhance communications within Yountville. For the techies in town, we launched the live video web streaming of our council and zoning and design review board meetings. These meetings are recorded and archived along with meeting agendas and minutes, making it convenient for anyone with access to a computer to review meetings at their leisure. The town continues to publish a bimonthly newsletter and monthly Parks and Recreation flyer for the benefit of the community. Of course, our very own Yountville Sun, published weekly, is another excellent source of information for residents and visitors, and the Town's In the Neighborhood by Mr. Rogers is a particularly good resource answering your questions relating to town issues. In an effort to improve our ability to document and produce reports, support and support online and e-commerce services, we are in the process of phasing in a new comprehensive financial software package. Staff has already brought payroll, accounts payable, and cash receipts into the system, and continues training and setting up various other modules, including utility billing and online bill payment features that will provide Yountville residents with an added convenience. Also, in an effort to reduce traffic and parking congestion in town, we replace our old outdated shuttles with the new Yountville trolleys, operating a continuous loop five days per week and offering free transportation around town to residents and visitors. New hours make it convenient to go to dinner and the theater, and afterward be delivered right back to your front door. Much of the credit for all that has taken place in Yountville is directly attributable to town management and staff. There have been significant organizational and operational changes at Town Hall over the past year. The town management team transitioned four key staff positions as we welcomed Kathleen Bradbury as our new Finance Director, Graham Wadsworth as our Public Works and Town Engineer, Arnold Alvarez Glassman as the Town Attorney, and John DeLorenzo as our interim Parks and Recreation Director. It is a testament to the town's management, staff, and employees who have worked through that level of transition and still continue to deliver a high level of service to our community, yet, as before, we still remain at the same level of staffing with a total of 24 town employees. Remarkably, Yountville's streetscapes and parks continue to improve and each season appear more beautiful than before. In addition to our townwide beautification program, council has pursued an aggressive capital improvement program. At times, it seems that the entire town was under construction, but the sounds of hammering, sawing, and backup beeps have decreased as projects are completed and the town nears build-out. We took advantage of the outstanding public bidding climate to complete a number of planned projects at considerable cost savings to the town. The council authorized the advancement of several projects planned for future years to this year to take advantage of very favorable construction bid results. As an example, over 24 companies bid on a recent sewer project, and the end result saved the town significant costs while getting the work done ahead of schedule. These are the types of win-win situations that benefit Yountville and make, and help keep local contractors working. Some notable capital projects include the following: the Midtown Pedestrian Project, including street curbs, crosswalks, and storm drain replacement, and the addition of new streetlights; the North Washington Sewer Lateral Replacement Project; the Fennel Street Bridge Repair and Replacement; South Washington Street Sewer Relocation Project; Hopper Creek Bank Stabilization and Sediment Removal; Jefferson Street Overlay Project; Upgrade of Electrical and Lighting at the Yountville Community Park; Renovation of Yountville Park Community Playground, including curbing, new play equipment, and a safety mulch surface; improvements along Mulberry and Washington Streets as part of the new community center project; a townwide signage program. Town staff is now making our own street and park signs. And finally, another large capital project that began last year and continues is the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, or the JTP Joint Treatment Plant, as it's referred to, because it's shared, it is a shared facility with the Veterans Home. Construction commenced on the $1.2 million modernization project, which seeks to upgrade the tertiary level of treatment to meet what is referred to to meet what is referred to as Title 22 unrestricted levels of treatment standards. This is the highest level of treatment that a wastewater facility can attain. By upgrading the plant to this standard, we also increase the capacity as determined by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We also increase supply to our recycled water customers and their off-site storage. Also, we may be able to attain a zero-discharge status through our permit issued by the regional board, saving the town over $1.25 million by not having to place a diffuser into the Napa River. Council has addressed several general plan issues as well, as we have submitted to the state and received our certification on an updated housing element. Through what seemed like endless negotiations, Yountville has continued to meet the demands for affordable housing, with 50 new units being constructed. 25 at the Fennel Place Project and 25 in conjunction with the Yountville Inn Expansion. As a result of in-season workshops, council has addressed new land use issues. We listened to your concerns and adopted a retail diversity policy, ensuring that future wine tasting establishments include a retail component that is distinguishable from wine tasting operations. The challenges and opportunities in 2010 and 2011. The country is slowly emerging from what is now the most significant economic downturn since the Great Depression. There are signs that the economy is beginning to improve, but it will likely be a slow and protracted recovery. Yountville has weathered the storm relatively well due to our fiscal planning and management practices. Unfortunately, the state of California government seems completely dysfunctional, and decisions made in Sacramento are having a significant and negative impact on local funding sources, which impacts our ability to continue the delivery of high-quality services to you. The state continues to try to resolve its budget problems by stealing money that has historically been used to fund local services, such as streets, police, and fire. We need your help to tell Sacramento enough is enough and to support an upcoming voter initiative designed to prevent the state's electeds from balancing their budget problems by taking funds from local governments. As of December 30th, 2009, the town is on track with anticipated revenues related to the budgeted revenue for the current fiscal year ending June 30, 2010. This council recognizes that in spite of our good financial situation, it is prudent to plan for a reduction in overall TOT revenue. Property tax revenue is coming in greater than budgeted, and we are receiving our $80,000 to $100,000 in COPS grant funding, which was not included in the budget at all this year. The council is working with staff on plans to scale back current-year expenditures to provide a budget safety net should TOT revenues not materialize as projected. However, our TOT tracking reports, which are available on the town's website at www.townofyountville.com, show some positive trending. Occupancy rates are tracking slightly off from the record 2008 year, but the average room rate has declined from a high of $304 to $278, which has resulted in about a 6% to 7% decline in overall TOT revenue. Sales tax revenue, principally derived from visitors dining in our restaurants, continues to be positive, whereas the statewide average is at an overall decline in the range of 15%. More importantly, as we begin to plan the planning process for a reduced expenditure plan for fiscal year 2010-11, we must develop a budget and service level that is within our financial means. As residents, we need to be prepared for the possibility that there could be changes from what we have experienced, grown to expect, and have taken for granted all these years if there is less revenue available to fund those service levels. We need to work on a plan to address the continued general fund subsidies to the town's water and wastewater enterprise funds. Like all true business, these operations are supposed to be completely funded by ratepayer utility charges. There are positive economic trends, however. In spite of the economic downturn and recession, all is not doom and gloom in Yountville. Yountville has reason to be optimistic about our future given some of the following economic trends. Excuse me. An increase in total room capacity from 402 rooms to 422 rooms, with the opening of the 20-room Hotel Luca and 92-seat Cantinetta Piero Restaurant in December. The full impact of this increase is yet to be determined, but over the long run will result in an increased level of general fund revenue available to fund town services. The Yountville Inn Expansion nears its anticipated completion and will add an additional 32 rooms, bringing the total to 454. There is reason to believe we will be well-positioned for future revenue growth when the economy recovers during this next year, which in turn will provide additional TOT and sales tax revenue paid by those visiting our town. We continue to see additional economic expansion with the construction and summer opening of the new Sorento Building by Somershton Wines, which will include a significant retail component consistent with our recently adopted retail diversity requirements. The Vita Restaurant Project is now actively under construction and is anticipated to open later this year. Continued reinvestment by local businesses, including Hope &amp; Grace, who expanded the size of their existing operations, and we welcome several new wine tasting retail outlets, Gerard, Verismo, Cornerstone, and Paige to town. The completed renovation of Bouchon Bistro Patio Area, renovation of the Yountville Deli and Patio Area at Ranch Market, and approved plans for the Pacific Blues remodel are also signs of positive economic growth. We've also seen the arrival of several new shops at the V Marketplace. Reinvestment and new office and retail space will be available at Washington Square this year as the property undergoes remodel and upgrade. There are two spaces available for the new dining establishments as well. The approval of Vineyard Oaks Green Building Residential Subdivision consisting of 12 market-rate detached single-family dwellings and two affordable duplex dwellings, for a total of 16 dwelling units on 13 parcels located along the east side of Stags View Lane. Completion of several new single-family residential home projects occurred last year, and there are several under construction at this time. Finally, the town continues to revamp and improve town communications efforts, both internally, within the town's organizational structure, and externally to our residents, business community, and regional community partners. The town council has agreed to work with a consultant to develop a comprehensive five-year strategic plan and vision for the town of Yountville. This process has just kicked off and will include a number of public hearings to engage the community in helping to craft Yountville's future. Working with our staff, the council continues on efforts to maintain and enhance community outreach and education through refinement and ongoing update of the content available on the town's website. Our objective is to improve and increase content and to include a search mechanism and document library. Update of the municipal code to include the ability of the town to put the entire code online. Look for this to happen in the next few months. Continued publication of the town newsletter every two months and the publication of a monthly Park and Recreation Services flyer. Implementation of an email subscription service for town information, agendas, media releases, and periodic updates available on the Wine Net. Town employee training and employee development workshops. Issuance of media releases related to town activities and events. Video web streaming of town council meetings and ZDRB meetings and council agenda packet information and staff reports on the town website. Continue and increase the frequency of town and business community forums. These are all positive steps in the right direction for Yountville. In closing, I know this is the part you've all been waiting for. In closing, the council and the town management team will continue to address the issues important to Yountville. As we enter the new year, we will begin the process of developing our five-year strategic plan, our roadmap, to help guide us, keep us on track, and remind us of our responsibilities as elected officials and your public servants. I encourage you to participate in this process. Part of the process is building healthy relationships with our friends and neighbors and keeping the lines of communication open and clear. Communication is the key to our success, and we will do all that we can to continue to provide accurate and timely information through the various channels previously described. Yountville continues to shine as the crown jewel in the Napa Valley. We are cradled in the ultimate setting of rolling green hills and vineyards. Our marketing and public relations efforts continue to draw visitors to Yountville to experience our hospitality, stay at our inns, dine in our restaurants, and lavish in our spas. This is essential to our continued economic success and our ability to provide the high level of services we currently enjoy. Our future depends on insight and leadership, keeping at all times Yountville's best interests at the forefront. I am confident that Yountville has that leadership in place and will be in good hands in the years to come. We are your representatives. Please let us know what you are thinking and how we can work together to make Yountville a better place to live, work, and play. And even though we are bombarded daily with the doom and gloom which seems to be all around us, I believe our future is bright, and all that we love and cherish about this tiny little town continues to fill my heart exponentially. Thank you, Yountville. Sincerely, Cindy Saucerman, Mayor, Town of Yountville. So that's that.[1300.73][1300.73][applause] And that will be subject to debate at a later time. Item 11, Noise Ordinance Townwide. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you. This is a proposal from staff to make amendments to our current noise ordinance. It's found in the municipal code, Chapter 8.04. And that chapter provides for general noise restriction that's essentially an annoyance-based type of measure. And it also discusses contracted work, landscaping, animals to some extent, although animals are also barking dogs at least controlled in another section of the ordinance, 6.04050, which is the animal section of the municipal code. And then it also talks about exemptions for emergency equipment, agricultural operations, warning devices. And then it provides for sound amplification permits and also that are granted by the town manager. So that's the current noise ordinance. And what's being suggested in this proposal is to adopt a more objective standard that would be measurable by a equipment. And there's a couple of example ordinances that are in the staff report from the Town of Truckee and Temecula. And I looked at other ones from City of Portland, Berkeley, quite a few other cities. And the common theme running through this has to do with day-night differentiation. They typically and very consistently use the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 to define day and 10:00, 7:00 a.m. to define night. And also, the level of noise that's permitted by a breakdown of the land use type, residential, commercial, would be most applicable in our situation here. Others get into industrial and hospital zones and that type of thing. I did find consistency as well through these ordinances of the daytime permissible noise levels at the receiving site and also the nighttime levels, within generally a 5 decibel difference. The Truckee example in the staff report has a sliding scale of duration. If you look on the left side, it's talking about the number of minutes that these decibel levels can be exceeded through the day and night. And that's kind of an added feature that accounts for sporadic and temporary noise that would exceed the standard. For instance, in a residential zone in the daytime, you could exceed or not more than 15 minutes 60 decibels in that zone. I found 65 to be a fairly common standard. So this, for daytime noise in a residential zone, 60 to 65, somewhere in there. So this provides more of a range here in the Truckee ordinance for exceeding noise. And as it goes up, the time drops down. And then the commercial land uses as well. There's a matrix that came from the State of California General Plan Guidelines that shows the compatibility matrix here of noise exposure against land use and the decibel levels. So the core of the change of what we are proposing to our existing ordinance would be this new standard that's an objective standard, day-night by land use type, would be added to our current ordinance. We'd also be adding a purpose and intent section, as well as some new definitions. And then maybe a couple of changes to our the section that talks about exemptions and exceptions. That will mostly stay intact, as you see it now, though. But the biggest change would be these new standards for decibels that would be measurable by a noise meter. And that will require the purchase of the noise meter and then another instrument that calibrates the noise meter. So, and that's about approximately total $1,000. This was taken to the ZDRB for their comments at their January 12th meeting. And they had comments that talked about setting standards or the lack of established standards for special events. Right now, there are no set for special events that are having music or just making noise from the gathering of people. It's on a per-case basis. And we do ask them if they are proposing noise, but there's no decibel level they are required to or obligated to not exceed. There was one interesting distinction about amplified music as opposed to someone just turning on a radio with all the announcements that go with it. And I thought that was a good, as did the rest of the ZDRB, good comment. There are other comments. One was exemption for agricultural activities. It's actually in the ordinance already. The start time, and as I mentioned, is very consistent through these ordinances of 7:00 to 10:00. Those hours were discussed quite a bit, and the suggestion that 7:00 may be too early to start permitting increased noise levels. And then 10 o'clock may be too late. The most recent discussion we've had on these are the wine tasting use permits and how late they can go. Typically, 9:00. And then a further suggestion by another ZDRB member wanted to tie it more to a seasonal, in the summer, dark, when it gets dark or whatever determinant that would be when it's dark enough to cease activities. But rather than tying it to an hour, something that were more seasonally based than an hour. Most of these ordinances, some of them provide for interior as well as exterior. The ones that I'm suggesting in this ordinance would be exterior, measured at the property line. I think you would find the interior noise limitation I think you would find the interior noise limitations where you would have a community that had more housing with attached walls, condos and apartments, that type of thing. All of the condos are under homeowners' associations right now and they have their own set of standards. And I'll say, the experience has been that we receive very few noise complaints at all. And when we do, they are typically someone's gone beyond their hour that they were supposed to close the event down, or they didn't get a permit to begin with, or it's a barking dog kind of a thing that it's no guesswork involved whether, if an enforcement officer is to respond to the event that that is occurring, that the dog's barking and it's pretty evident that that's happening. So this would be, these standards would be a means to determine maybe a chronic problem if they were meeting an objective standard. But I will say that for the most part, we don't receive a lot of noise complaints. And when we do, it's fairly clear what happened, that they went beyond their time or didn't get a permit. So that's the report. And I think what, warning input from the council on are these noise levels that are essentially community-based and in common usage in other communities as far as the decibel levels, the hours that they would be enforced. There's another list of discussion points that exemptions, these are fairly common, but we have the, say, hot air balloons if that would be added to the exemptions. They do produce noise in the early morning. Really never received a complaint about the noise they make. Construction hours, suggestion here that that be in a separate section, but actually I would leave it in the noise section as well, even if you want to take it out and put it in another section. Construction days and hours sometimes appear in not only the noise ordinance, but they get into conditions of approval for not doing construction on weekends and holidays for other reasons that there is a respite from the construction activity. It's not only the noise, but it's the cars that come to the construction site and the activity at the construction site, even if they were not making or exceeding noise levels. The special events, we will suggest some language for special events. Some of them are built into their use permits, particularly the wine tasting uses that have, are permitted for special events through the year. Barking dogs are pretty well handled in the two sections. They're in the noise ordinance and they're also in the, that other section I noted. Sensitive land uses, schools, churches, retirement homes. We've really not had complaints associated with those types of uses. They are fairly insulated from the commercial activities. And HVAC, noise generation, delivery vehicles, and I note here, they're usually associated with construction sites. So those are the discussion points and we are requesting the town council's input and we will return with a draft ordinance if it's your wish to see a draft ordinance.
Does council have any questions for staff? Councilmember Muller?
I have several questions. The first one has to do with, I was looking at the current ordinance, which it looks like it was last updated in May 2000. And it discusses the noise control officer. And as you were saying, and there's also definitions and attachment too that talk about the sound equipment that you mentioned. So my question, who is the, or how will you assign the noise control officer? Who will be that person? Who will get trained on the use of this meter? Are they going to be somebody that's around 24/7 in case there's, you know, something going on at midnight?
Right.
Can you give me a little information on that and then I have some other questions?
That would be planning staff typically and the sheriffs.
And the sheriffs. So someone will be designated from the staff and they'll be primary or both people will be, can be called. Because a lot of times if there's a lot of noise, people will call the police.
Right.
You know, if no one's around here, if they don't have your cell phone number, if you're the designated person, how's that going to work?
Well, typically on a weekend, which frequently when these happen, the sheriff will get called.
Okay.
And they'll have access to the equipment. Most cases, though, they're going to check and they, in our special event permit, permitting system, they get routed and a chance to comment on every special event before the permit is issued. So they're, they'll be aware whether a permit was issued for it. So they'll know, A, does it have a permit and what the terms of that permit is. And then mostly right now, they go and see if it's past hours, they're supposed to be making the noise. And that's how it's done right now. But if it were a matter of measuring the noise, they would have access to the equipment and know how to use it.
So everyone's going to be trained on that. Okay. Then my other question, when I was looking through an item under 8.04.040, item C, it refers you to the special events. But in the special events, it doesn't really have anything there about getting an amplified noise permit within the municipal code there. So I've also, so that's one of the questions I'd like to have you. How do people know to do that? Also, if, like the wine tasting rooms are given a use permit, how will they know that they need, what does that use permit include? Is it going to, do they need another special event permit? And then if they get a special event permit, do they need an additional amplified sound permit? I think we need some clarity around that. I'm a little
Yeah, right now
confused. Because you mentioned that everybody, sometimes the biggest mistake is they didn't know they needed a permit.
Right now, the, on the application for special, dealing with special events, on that application, they are asked if they're going to have food, if they're going to have a tent, and if they're going to have amplified noise and music. Then we would know, we would know to tell them that they need a amplified noise permit as well. And we would also, based on that information, tell them they need to go talk to environmental management for the food, if there's alcohol involved and maybe an ABC thing. So we refer them elsewhere to get the permits additional that they would need. The use permits for the wine tasting, they are usually permitted, they're three or four special events and it's typical that they request through the year annually. And I think most of them, if I'm not mistaken, are required to come back to staff, provide a parking plan. There's additional staff contact that has to be made at that point before they have this special event. And then if it's the same case where they're going to have amplified noise, we would make them apply for the amplified noise permit.
So all the wine tasting rooms know if they're going to have one of these events, that they need to go through this process?
I don't think there are any that were allowed to just have a special event without contacting staff. I think that the typical condition was that they had to come back to staff and let us know when that was happening.
Also, in terms of, I looked up the user application for the community hall and they have sections within that that discuss amplified music indoors and outdoors. And since we're mostly just talking about outdoors, they have also set a 50 decibel limit. And it says, all the music must end promptly at 9:00 p.m. So anything we do here, will this be modified? Will it all be modified so that it all says the same thing? Is that the plan or you want us to discuss that after I quit asking questions?
Well, I think, once the standard is set, we can go into the special event permit and this, the permit you're talking for use of community hall, because you're saying it's 50 decibels for outside?
It says amplified music is allowed in the patio lawn or town square areas. An amplified music permit must be applied for and approved for any outdoor amplified music. Any outdoor amplification must end promptly at 9:00 p.m., which sounds reasonable. Sound cannot exceed 50 decibel limit at the border of the community center property. And here it says building attendants have the authority to turn it off.
Yeah. 50 decibels is normal conversation, so that's pretty low.
Right. Yeah. So that's what it says.
Turn your car on.
So, anyway, those are my questions. I have some comments when we get to that part.
Councilmember Chilton, you have questions?
Bob, I've got a detailed question on the current ordinance. They all say page 117. Must be long pages. The section about specific types of noise prohibited at 8.04.030, it's the third page, and it goes to landscaping tools and equipment, which is part C, which flips over to the back of the next. I just want to confirm, because this is, when I was rereading this before the meeting, it wasn't the same as I had remembered. One is, is that if you have a contracted landscape maintenance, they have to work between 8:00 and 5:00 Monday through Friday. If you're doing your own yard, you can work on the weekends.
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yeah. Property owner or tenant activity is right below it.
Right.
And
And I guess the question that I had is, I know there was a situation that was, a citizen brought to my attention, which had to do with contractors coming in and just leaf blowing and general maintenance work. And I felt like at some point we'd gone through and found that there was some exception to that that allowed it on a weekend. Is that, am I incorrect on that?
It's 8 to 5, Monday through Friday for contracted work and 8 to 8 for seven days a week for an owner. So you're asking, is there an exception that they could come in earlier?
That they can come in on Saturday at all? A contractor could work outside and
Not according to this. We've had, you know, instances where they can request weekend work or holiday work, but it has to be approved by the town manager.
Okay.
And typically, that's a no unless there's a benefit derived by getting that work done so it's less disruptive.
Kind of a one-time thing. I mean, my main question and/or concern, which you address a bit with Councilmember Muller, has to do with enforcement. Because I think there, when I read through this, there are certain items in here that I feel like are not necessarily enforced now. That would be one of them. And my question is adding levels of detail and new rules and new exceptions. I'm worried we're going to make it harder on ourselves and I would like your perspective on that enforcement side. And I don't really even understand where this came from. I mean, how did this get initiated? Was the staff concerned that you didn't have any objective way to go out and say, yes, this is too loud? Or actually, it's not? What's the history on this?
And the standard now is, I think it's something about a person of normal sensibilities and we don't know what that is, you know, that they perceive the noise to be a nuisance. So we were trying to direct this into more an objective standard. Noise is also one of the elements of a general plan and they've definitely moved in the state to objective standards rather than any type of otherwise subjective, you know, standard. So it's really coming in align with the convention used elsewhere. And I would suggest that the enforcement, for whatever quality it is, be set aside and this looked at as providing the tools that would be needed if there were an ongoing chronic problem where there was enforcement necessary. That right now, we don't have a real good standard to, where there enforcement to be done, to make a case that it's exceeding the standard. It's really someone saying, well, no, that's not too loud and someone's saying it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Councilmember Dutton?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments, Bob. And then, of course, I think at the very end, you sort of wrapped it up and saying we really haven't had a whole lot of complaints. So that leads to Councilmember Chilton's comment about why we've been discussing this. But I understand the need for having some level. And you did explain, I did have a question on the enforcement about, you know, when they do get a special permit, that it also goes to the sheriff's department so they know in effect that there is an event or something going on, that they're aware of it. And I didn't know how that works, so I appreciate that, taking that up. I did have a little question and you mentioned throughout the ones that you studied was a 7:00 a.m. start. You know, I really question that in a town this size and just the nature of the town itself with, you know, inns and that type of thing. You know, we don't really have any industrial operations here that would get started. So I would really question if we should go to 7:00 a.m. I think that would, I think that could cause a few problems. I wondered too, just on the one you had, animals, and then they segregated it to barking dogs. And in one, it says you have to have, on just basically any animal, you know, at least two people, you know, sort of make complaints and that type of thing. But the officer would listen to one. And the same goes on the dogs, so, and it really doesn't address it even if wanted. I mean, the way I read the barking dogs on C is that you'd have to have at least two citizens complaining. And I don't know the reason for that other than, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's isolated cases maybe where there's just one house that's effective and, you know, that would be effective. It would seem that if there is a problem, whether there's one person or two effective, at least the one person should have certainly the rights, I would think, if it's a nuisance and especially if that officer determined, yeah, this is a problem. So, I mean, that was just a procedural thing that I noticed on that particular one. The other, there was a question came up today, somebody called me and I don't know, obviously leaf blowers are a big issue on some of these things. Is, are you aware of anything that, you know, that somewhere that the people that do this as a landscaping business or that they're exempt from these type of ordinances within towns? It didn't seem realistic, but they, somebody, this person called me and said they had heard they were told that.
Like a state?
I don't know. I was just curious if you're aware of anything.
Los Angeles has banned their use within 500 feet of residences.
Okay, yeah, it didn't seem
But they were doing it for a different reason. They were, it was the particulates that they blow into the air and, of course, they make noise as well.
Right.
And the gas from the engines aren't, there's no scrubbing of the, you know, it's just raw fumes. So it's been done elsewhere as far as banning their use or limiting their use.
That's what I thought on that. Yeah, I was just, I was just asking. Okay. The other, the other one, and I think as you read through this, then you think, you know, what kind of complaints, you know, have you heard? And it seems the biggest one I've heard from people are the garbage collection. You know, how come they have to start so early? You know, and then they do have their backup beepers. And I know sometimes, and I've been on that committee, I've talked to them and they'll give you all these reasons, well, we, you know, because of logistics, we have to get started here and there and that type of thing. And I know they have made some route changes, I guess, in town here to maybe appease some of the residents or maybe they're doing it in commercial areas first. So that's, that's the biggest issue I've ever heard a lot of people have with the garbage collection, that they come in too early.
I've noticed in other ordinances that they do, in one, it was a 6:00 a.m. limitation. Now, that's pretty early, but I've heard our garbage, not personally, but I've heard of it in other parts of town, even prior to 6:00, picking up. And then that backup, you know, the backup noise And then that backup, you know, the backup noise they make, that's an OSHA requirement that that has to be loud enough to be perceived through the headsets that they wear for hearing protection. So, yeah, they're loud.
That's about all I have right now.
Any questions? John?
Yeah, I just have a couple. And I think the ZDRB did a good job of vetting this, having heard this report before. And in particular, Board Member Wennerberg bringing up the difference between, like, a controlled music environment like CDs or something where it's continuous music being played versus radio, where you're then kind of bombarded, I think was his term, with commercials and non-music. And I think that was a good point to, we need to distinguish that in that application process, I think. Also, make sure that it's clear it's a property boundary issue. If somebody has indoor music, you know, turns on the stereo, opens all the doors and windows, it basically becomes exterior music. And the neighbors are impacted as if it's outside. So, I'm not sure exactly what kind of language would help remedy that, but that's just a concern because we certainly have areas where residential properties are up against businesses. And he cited specifically in his neighborhood about the overflow on noise. I think Board Member Jane's point about adjusting the time to be a sunset time at night makes sense. Also, I would generally agree with some of the council comments tonight about 7:00 AM possibly being too early for construction noise in particular. One concern I had as it relates to restaurants is glass disposal. I'm not sure if we have any particular text on that, but I think whenever any restaurant disposes of its glass, everybody in town hears it, no matter which restaurant it is. And so, I don't know if we can craft some language where that's a little bit more limited to certain hours of operation. I think it makes sense to be able to quantify the decibel level. I know, I think it makes sense that, first of all, that this is really complaint-driven. We don't have a chronic problem in town, but I do think it's appropriate to be proactive and have some kind of objective tool or measurement so that if an ongoing, chronic problem does present itself, we're able to respond to it. I think those were my only comments. The one other, I wrote myself a note when Councilmember Shilton was talking about the property contracted services. And do we have language where it states anything about emergency service? Because, you know, if your water heater breaks and floods your downstairs and you need somebody to come in and deal with the carpets, you can't wait till Monday to get a permit. So, I don't know if we have an exclusion or an exemption in your terms responding to something like that. Those would be, I think those are all the comments I had. I think, like I said, it's not, we're not responding to a significant problem, but I think it makes sense to be proactively prepared.
Good comments. Before I ask for further discussion, I'd like to open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this draft noise ordinance? Anyone? Anything bothering you in the form of noise at any hour of the day or night? Well, I would, okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back for further discussion and direction. Yeah, I, I'm curious about the standards, the decibel levels and standards for defining what constitutes noise. And for normal conversation in a residential area to constitute a noise, an annoyance, I find that difficult to deal with. And like the vice mayor said, it's something that would be complaint-driven and something that I assume, you know, you would probably have to interact with your neighbors before, before the worst-case scenario and having the enforcement of some kind. I think we need to write in some flexibility, a little latitude as far as private property owners and residential areas are concerned, with the exception of barking dogs and leaf blowers and that sort of thing. I don't think we can dictate to Upper Valley Waste Management what time they can pick up trash or not. We're lucky that they're picking it up at all. But I think what generated this originally, as I recall, were complaints about the leaf blowers early in the morning. And I know for a fact that the leaf blower at the Yountville Elementary School is, is in full force and effect around 7:00 AM. And, but that's Monday through Friday, so if we want to change that, I noticed in the ordinance, we indicate 7:30. And I think that's, I think that's appropriate for the school because the kids are there at 8:00 o'clock. So, we don't want to have that activity going on during the school hours. And that's the only time I've really noticed it. But I've also noticed that there are contractors appearing at residential home, residential areas, outside contractors on weekends, and it's, it's pretty extensive. So, how do, how we enforce that, I don't know. I mean, I just can't see us all become, becoming the noise police in our neighborhoods. I can point you that next year. No, thanks.
The, a couple of things on the leaf blowers or the start of this 7 to 10 in these hours we're talking about. That is a departure from what we have, as someone noted currently. It's later in our existing ordinance, 7:30 and 8:00. So, we can adjust that on to be consistent with what we're doing now. The, the trash company, I, one thing I didn't check, and it occurred to me today later, that to check their agreement to see if they are exempted from being held hours, I don't know that, if that's in their agreement with us. That could be in there. I don't know. And this, I didn't want to confuse anyone, but the barking dog section, I tacked that on just at the end of the noise ordinance. It's really in another section. There's, there's animals that are, there's an animal section, and it comes from that. And then there is this noise section that talks about animals, too, in 8.04.030. Specific types of noise prohibited. And they don't really, they refer to the barking dog section that I tacked on at the end here and there. They talk about any animal. And we do, every now and then, get questions about how many chickens can I keep and that kind of thing. So, they would fall under this. What we will do is take these comments and any others, and...
Counsel clearly is not the end of the discussion. If counsel has any more comments, I do concur with Councilmember Dutton. I mean, I don't think it should be up to a minimum of two people complaining about a barking dog. Because it's like he says, if there's only one neighbor that's home and the dog's barking all day, then that should be sufficient. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say I agree and really thanks, thank you for bringing together some objectable, objective, measurable standards. I think that's very proactive and a good way to give some parameters about, you know, how much is, is too much. I also agree, 10:00 o'clock seems a bit late. Tying it to the season in the wintertime, you know, sunset's around 6:00 o'clock. Of course, it might be earlier. And then 9:00, you know, in the summertime, seemed pretty reasonable to me, too. Because that's how late our tasting rooms aren't open past that, and all of our big events are pretty much shut down by that. So, that seems reasonable to me, and it's consistent with what's already in the text for the community hall. So, I'd just like to mention, once we get done with whatever our noise ordinance is, that we circle back to whatever in the language for the user permit for the community hall, so it's consistent. We don't want them to have one set of standards and then another set of standards for, you know, somebody else. So, I think if that makes sense to the Parks and Community Service people, that seems to be reasonable to me, too. And I think, as you mentioned, in the current ordinance where, with outdoor activities, where you send people to chapter 8.2 to get one of these permits, I would just add some text in that section that refers them back to the noise ordinance. Because right now, when you go there, there's nothing there about noise. And you mentioned that when you go for one of these special events, you happen, if they write it down, they're going to have music. Then you address it. So, if we just have, just cross-reference this new ordinance in that section, that way they're linked together and they'll kind of know they need to bring that up. They won't just think, oh, I have a special event permit, I can have music. So, it just has them read this part. I think that's it. Those are my comments.
Want to toss anything into the file?
Of course. My primary comments are really the concern about, I would say, A, enforcement, and B, the creating degree of these unwieldy rules that get so specific. And I'm sitting here writing about different things we've talked about. We've talked about HVAC systems and contracted services and trash pickup and glass disposal and leaf blowers and music, whether it's CDs or radios, ag equipment, special events, dogs, trucks backing up. I, my biggest problem here is I don't think there's, I don't think there's a huge problem. And what I'd like to see is something simple put in place. One of the ideas that I was thinking is if there's simply a, you know, a maximum decibel level that can, that can go over a property line, and if you're going to go over that, you have to get a special event permit, for example. But, you know, I hear people sometimes talk about leaf blowers or trash pickup. And I would agree. I think trash, I would say at the deli, I've almost never seen the trash get picked up, but it does get picked up. And we have people there at 5:30 in the morning, so, you know, it is loud, but it's once a week. And I don't know, I have a little bit of the attitude of, one, I think we need to make sure we're enforcing what we can. We don't enforce some provisions that are already there, so adding levels of complexity, to me, I question the wisdom of that. I think having an objective standard, but not an unwieldy objective standard, that some of these, you know, whose was it? Those truckies or somebody that, all these different zoning, and this 55 and that's 45. And, you know, if it's just at 70. But I also don't want to, you know, I've got my neighbors and, you know, once in the summer, they have all their friends over on a Saturday night and they have a big raucous party, as long as they're not playing AC/DC out there, you know? Good for them. Okay, I know, okay.
What's wrong with AC/DC?
Yeah, I've got two people who just said that to me, you know. I don't know, I mean, we live in a town. I used to live in Manhattan, and I'm not saying we're Manhattan. But, you know, I had to buy the biggest air conditioning system I could buy to turn on all the time because it was so loud all the time. And if you want to live at the end of a one-lane road in the middle of the country, then go do it. But we do live in a town, albeit a small town, a rural town. And I think we should just proceed in a very limited way that does give staff and/or the sheriff's department some tools to use, but is not unwieldy, that is not trying to control everybody's life, and is simple and doesn't create more problems than, that don't exist right now. I don't know, that's my general attitude. If you hadn't brought this up, I wouldn't have said we needed to bring it up.
Bill, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I concur. I don't think you have to kill an ant with a sledgehammer, you know what I mean? So, yeah, like, I think you summed it up, as I mentioned earlier, Bob, we really haven't had that many. You know, we don't. And as long as you have some type of enforcement in effect, and I think, I think that's the real issue. And for the most part, I think people know when they cross the line and should expect somebody to maybe knock on the door and, you know, and tell them that they better...
Turn it down.
Turn it down a little bit. So, I agree, just to tune it up. But do have something in effect, you know, where you can say, hey, look, here's, you know, here's what the levels, you know, you're at or whatever right now, it's the reasonablest thing, and some people aren't as reasonable as others, unfortunately. But I don't think there's any need to go crazy on this thing. And along, along with the garbage pickup, I'll check it up with the agreements that I have and talk to Upper Valley and see, you know, exactly what their schedules are in here and what have you.
Just quickly, I'll just say, I agree with the general concept of us not over-governing what's happening, especially if there isn't a problem. But I do think it's important that we have on the books the regulations to be enforced as needed. And if we don't catch some of these unique situations that we do have in town as they relate to wine tasting rooms or restaurants in particular with their garbage pickup or their glass disposal, those types of things, even the hot air balloons that we can't control quite as much as we can some of these other in-town issues. I think if we can establish certain parameters, have them on the books, refer to them as necessary. That's kind of how I see this. It's, I don't see it being a problem, but if, if there is a complaint about leaf blowers or when construction noise begins, and we haven't addressed that in our ordinance, then there's no answer for the public. So, as long as we have it in place, it's up to us to enforce it or not. And I think we've always taken a fairly good neighbor approach to this, either the sheriff, you know, a deputy or town staff responding to a situation and basically solving the problem right there. We're not having to pull out the ordinance and citing the text. But I do think that it's, you know, it's appropriate and, you know, staff's role to try to have an enforcement tool available when they need it.
Any concerns about the timing? 7 to 10?
Well, I said that in my early comments, and I think 7 is too early for a lot of the noises that we're talking about here. I think the ongoing noises, of course, if there's a, an occasion, a random, whether it be a party at night or in the morning or whatever, I think that's clearly not going to fall under these restrictions. But if that same neighbor has, you know, 20 people over every weekend, it might start to bother some of the, some of the neighbors. So, again, that way we have the text in here that says, these are your restrictions.
Yeah, I would agree. I really don't think we need to overwork this, this issue and this ordinance. I think what we have on the books now is sufficient. It's, with maybe the exception of some minor time changes. In all the years I've been on the council, I can actually recall three incidents where folks commented during public comment about noise. And that was the church, church chimes or the church bells, they commented about them. And they don't go, they go on at 9:00 and 6:00 PM, which I don't even, if you're still in bed at 9:00 o'clock, you've got a problem. So, they commented on the church bells, they commented on the leaf blowers, and they commented on the trash pickup. Those are the only three major concerns. I think when it comes to residential noise levels, that's something that the neighbors can work out. But we should have time limits on that. And 10:00 o'clock has been typically the time limit that's been enforced, as far as I know, in years past. I don't think that, I don't think that the commercial activity should start as early as 7:30, but that's just me. 8:00 AM is early enough, but there are certain situations where contractors have to be to work by 7:00, 7:30, and they're just chomping at the bit by 7:30 to get started, so. And 8:00 AM, like I say, we have, the little elementary school classes begin at 8:00 AM, and obviously, we can't have the noise going on during class. So, I don't know how we deal with it, if we have to make any exceptions. But I know in the summertime, personally, with my doors and windows open and music playing on the stereo, I, I, if I'm offending anyone, I would hope that they would call me. me or come over and knock on my door. I don't think it should be unlawful. I don't think we need anything on the books that says it's unlawful. So, and besides, enforcement is, is the issue, I think, the crux of the issue here. Are we going to enforce it and how are we going to enforce it fairly evenly across the board in all sectors? So, I don't know. With that, does council or staff have enough direction to craft something that might appeal to everyone?
Well, certainly make an attempt and bring it back for review and possible action.
Okay. Okay. All righty. Item twelve, Napa County Measure A Financial Oversight Committee, Yountville representative. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. The town of Yountville is recruiting, recruiting for a Yountville representative on the Napa County Measure A Financial Oversight Committee, which was a ballot measure back in ninety-eight, approved by the voters to create a half-cent sales tax that would fund flood protection projects throughout the county. Each jurisdiction within the county has a representative serving on that group and it also extends out to other categories such as the business community, local media, taxpayers' association, environmental community, and so on. The group meets quarterly, the first Monday of the month, in Napa at the Flood Control Office. And the main charge of this group is to inform the public about expenditures for the funds used, the tax for the Measure A funding. We have had Renata Holliday serving as the Yountville representative for several terms and she has chosen not to reapply. We started recruiting back in April of oh nine and have just received an application from one individual in December, December seventeenth, from Jim Shoup. He was interviewed earlier by council and staff is requesting that council either recommend Mr. Shoup to the Board of Suits for a final appointment to the Measure A or extend the recruitment for additional advocates.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jim Shoup to the Measure A Oversight Committee.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None, that motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Shoup. Item thirteen, Staff Informational Reports, Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Status Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Feeling good about it, Graham?
Moving right along.
Nice looking pictures. Any other reports or comments from staff?
I'd just like to give a brief update on the TOT that came in for November, December. It's good news. Our total tax receipts were three hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred seventy dollars. That's forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars more than the same period from last year. So, we're up eleven point seven percent over last year for the same period. And our total for the year is one point eight, three-nine million or fifty-four percent of our budget projection. So, I'll have the full report posted to the website by the end of the week, but I just wanted to share the good news. We've also set up the stage for the monthly reporting, which will begin with January. January's report will be due March first and then each month thereafter.
Good. And this reporting period was through what?
This was November, December.
Very good.
Kathleen, just to clarify so nobody freaks out.
Yes.
Fifty-four percent of the budget is good. It's not that we're forty-six percent under budget.
That's correct.
Right, okay. Just want to make sure that's clear.
That's correct. Fifty percent of the year, we're at fifty-four percent.
Exactly.
Yes, that's a good, a good thing.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you for that report. Any other staff informational reports, comments? Okay, item fourteen, council reports. The flood control did meet today for a brief update and we were given an update on the water, well-water tables throughout the county and kind of some interesting data. In the Yountville area, we have two wells apparently on record. Well number one thirty-three nearly recovered to pre-drought spring levels in the spring of oh nine, while well number one thirty-four showed slight recovery in the spring level, but still seems to show drought impacts. Are we monitoring our municipal well?
Yes, we are.
And that's not thirty-three?
It doesn't appear to be included in my group.
No, it's not included in here. Okay. Well, it's kind of interesting information, all things considered. And that was pretty much it. We went into a next, rather protracted closed session and we'll see what happens with that.
Did they also mention the CNN was, did an article on the wine train relocation and the economic stimulus?
Yes. We covered all of that. And I, did anybody see the, the Good Morning America this morning? It was on, Stephanopoulos was reporting on the stimulus funds for the wine train relocation. Oh, well. Hey, any news is good news.
All press is good press.
That's right. Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency?
NCTPA met two or three weeks ago now. Couple of items were discussed. Number one, Caltrans sends a representative to every NCTA meeting, which is, which is usually entertaining because they usually say the same thing over and over because their projects take forever. However, the staff did specifically note two things. One is a, Caltrans staff wanted to thank the town of Yountville and its staff. So, thank you, Graham, and everybody else, Steve's not here, for working with them on the Bike Path project. The lady who's the normal representative remarked that, that, she said the project took four months. I think you guys would probably differ with that, but she said that she did not really believe that that could ever happen and that it would ever get done that fast. So, it's an interesting thing for Caltrans to have experienced because for her to say they'd get that done in four months, she said, "I didn't think that was possible." She said, "Now it's possible." We asked her if it would ever happen again, she didn't answer that question. So, anyway, thank you very much and Caltrans did note that specifically. Another item that did come up, it was in the Register, I believe, part of the new contract with Veolia Transportation for the Vine Bus Service includes performance metrics that they report on a quarterly basis in terms of safety, on time, et cetera. That presentation was made to NCTPA and they have shown additional improvement. They've been showing improvements over the last year and a half anyway. So, that was positive and it was good that that information is finally working its way out into the public domain as it should have all along. I will move on to LAFCO. Was there anything else you remember from that meeting?
Yeah, you covered it.
LAFCO met yesterday, two items. One was the draft budget for LAFCO was presented. I'm actually on the surprise, surprise Budget Subcommittee. And one thing that's peculiar about LAFCO, there's a lot of things peculiar about LAFCO, but one of them was the budgeting process. And every year, LAFCO would budget within its operating budget reserves in case something came over budget in terms of expenses, but did not maintain an ongoing operating reserve, although it somewhat did. So, what that has happened over the years, and we saw this last year, was you're basically billing all the jurisdictions which pay for LAFCO upfront for operating reserve. Those reserves were never used and then you get into this refund situation. So, one thing that we did was to eliminate that and create an ongoing reserve. So, once LAFCO hits a certain level of reserve, which is three months of operating expenses, then we just hold it there. And we've eliminated the upfront operating expense reserve. That should provide for better budget certainty for all the jurisdictions, including Yountville. So, I know LAFCO staff, since that draft was approved by the entire commission, is going to come out to the different jurisdictions to explain and propose that budget. Second, our finance director, Kathleen Bradbury, was an applicant to LAFCO since she bought a house in Napa, we'll forgive her for that. Despite the fact that she's right in the middle of Napa, her house was not part of the Napa Sanitation District, one of these mini islands that exists. And on Kathleen's behalf, I did read out the long list of administrative and governmental fees that she had to pay, which totaled almost eight thousand dollars. That doesn't even include the hookup. There was a forty-five hundred dollars to LAFCO, there was two thousand dollars to the department efficient game. So, I think you just see all these layers of fees for all these bureaucracies and we can thank Kathleen for paying those fees, but her application was approved. So, so that was, that was LAFCO.
Thank you for your, that report. A, Wick? Wick didn't hold a January meeting. It will, next meeting will be February the twenty-two. Okay, good. Any other council reports and comments?
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
No, well, I was just going to comment, especially just on the information that Kathleen just gave us. And I think, you know, not only ourselves, but I think all the residents should really be happy with news like that, especially in the economy for a number of things. And I, I think it really shows not only, you know, what we've done as a town to bring people in, but I think also the response from the hotels. You mentioned the average room rate, or excuse me, the mayor did. And, I mean, that's a response. I mean, they didn't sit back and say, "We can't do anything." And I think you saw where we've had occupancy rates ninety percent plus, which is really outstanding. And so, they have managed to get the people in and also those people go to the restaurants and everything. So, I think it's a really, it's a working thing. I think people enjoy coming here, but it's also, you know, there's, they've been enticed to get here, whatever reasons being, whether it's through the hotel rates, whether it's our PR. So, it's, whatever we're doing is working and I'm glad to hear that. Those are, I think, exceptional numbers. We'll probably be a little jealous of it throughout the county, I'm sure the other jurisdictions, but that's good.
Good. Vice Mayor, you have some comments?
Yeah, two items. One, I believe the entire council attended as long as some, as well as some of our staff to a Think Inn, Rebuilding California, that was really kind of spearheaded by Supervisor Diane Dillon. And it brought many of our community elected officials throughout the valley. School board members were present, as were members of the public. And we heard, of course, it's not terribly positive news, but it was, I thought, very informed analysis of the state budget situation. Chris McKenzie, who's the executive director of the League of California Cities, was a speaker talking about what they're doing. And I'll be presenting a report in our next meeting related to this initiative, a valid initiative to try to protect local tax dollars from being either borrowed or kept by Sacramento and not being dispersed to the local jurisdictions. Also, a representative from California Forward was there talking about some of their budget, structural budget changes that they're proposing to help fix California and also repair California, who is behind an effort to have a constitutional convention. So, there are some big, big players out there throughout the state that are really trying to engage. And I think the think tank concept is, has been a fairly effective one where, yes, there's some partisanship in some of these organizations, but I think in general, people are not waiting on Sacramento to fix things. They're getting creative and bringing smart people together to try to do it on our own. So, I think that was pretty engaging and we were able to show off our New Generations Room at the community center, which I think was a resounding job well done from the folks that were visiting there. The only other thing I want to mention real quickly was a thank you to our Parks and Community Services team for officially opening our new playground area up at the Yountville Park at the north end of town. Did not take long to get all those, all the toy, or the playground equipment full of kids. And we managed to have it on the one day last week that was sunny and reasonably dry, at least for a couple hours. And it was quite an interesting social experiment about the two baskets of potato chips and cookies and the basket of carrots and how few children went to the carrots. It was interesting, even though they were encouraged to take as many as they could handle. Anyway, thank you again to everybody that helped make that happen. I know when the weather comes around, it'll be quite the happening place.
Thank you for the, thank you for your comments. Future agenda items, Townwide Forestation Plan Presentation and Discussion, Ordinance Introduction and First Reading for the Yountville Municipal Code. Outstanding. Item sixteen, closed session at this time.
This is Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. We have one item, should be rather brief, under anticipated litigation, one potential case.
Good. Thank you.